We lost David. And that David we lost. We're gonna wait? Someone made him nervous. Nah, but he... I don't want us, you know. Here he is. Dave, can we... You ready to start? Yeah, we'll start. While the AV team is... There we go. We'll just get started. Okay, ready? Nah, nah, nah. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planeboard Meeting of March 13th, 2025. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2025 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided through the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days prior or in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Departments for inspections in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have roll call of board members and also Board and Township professionals, please.
Mayor Chikarelli, Mr. Flag, Mr. Rattowitz, and Mr. Smith are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Vitale?
Here.
Miss Smith?
Here.
Mr. Debb?
Here.
Committee in the party?
Present.
Present.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and Mr. Palace are here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. First up, we have consideration of the February 6th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Eligible members are Mr. Vitale, Ms. Smith, Mr. Debb, the Vice Chair, and the Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve these minutes? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any discussion from the dais? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Debb?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution for consideration, Hillsborough 206 Holdings LLC, with a file number of 18-PB-07MSPV. It's a 2024 amended site plan.
Everyone.
Everyone, well, good. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Debb?
Yes.
Committee in the party?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay, we do not have any planning board business, no considerations of ordinances, so I will go to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to provide any comments to the board. Okay. Moving on to public hearing, and I will invite the applicant representatives, and I'll let the objectors fight over the two seats, so.
Mr. Chairman, while the applicant and the objectors are arranging themselves, I have a couple of housekeeping issues. I am in receipt of a certification of absent board member from eligible... Examination of Record Eligibly to Vote from Mr. Peason, who has indicated he viewed the video recording for February 13th, 2025. I would indicate that both Mr. Debb and Mr. Vitale are not eligible to participate in this hearing this evening. If they wish to sit on the dais, they are more than welcome, but they cannot participate and they cannot vote, which means that we have the bare corm for tonight's meeting.
Unless Mr. Peason wants to pull back his examination of record,
and therefore makes him ineligible, and therefore we don't have a corm. Last chance, Rob.
Okay. So this evening, we have Homestead Road LLC, file number 21-PB-25-MSPV, with the time of decision of April 30th of this year. It's block 200.10, lots 32 and 33, otherwise, or commonly known as 203, Homestead Road and 189 Homestead Road. This application is a continuation from February 13th of this year, without further... Without further notice, and I will allow everyone to introduce themselves and put themselves on the record.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Craig Genetti of the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Dave Pitney... I'm sorry, I'm having the applicant, Homestead Road LLC.
Good evening. Mike Passaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute. Sorry. Mike Passaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute, objector number one.
Scott Gross, objector number two.
Brian Tarantino, representing SWAT.
John Lanahan, objector number four.
Lori Cleveland of the Sarland Conservancy.
I have a couple of other housekeeping items, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, Mr. Genetti raised some exhibit markings at the last hearing. The last exhibit that was marked for the applicant was number 13. We are proposing that number 14 is the Dolan and Dean Traffic Study, dated December 22nd, 2021, and the supplemental Dolan and Dean letter. That is not what is... That it does not include what I believe Mr. Dean will be testifying to later this evening.
So is that one exhibit or two exhibits?
We're gonna do two exhibits. That'll be A14, will be the supplemental.
And the supplemental is dated May 9th, 2023.
What was all the year?
Uh, May 9th, 2023.
23, thank you. A15 will be Easter State's Ed Cook EIS. 5-29-23 letter will be A15. A16 will be the 2024 EIS supplement. A17, A18, and A19 will be the Cofone Planning Memos. A17 will be September 26th, 2022. A18 will be November 16th, 2022. A19 will be August 17th, 2022... 23, pardon me. A20 will be the Community Impact Statement dated March 2024. And A21 will be the MNH Architect Letter dated May 9th, 2023.
So there were two MNH letters, one dealing with building... One responding to the Board Engineer Review Letter, one responding for the Board Planner.
And the date on that one is?
It was the same date, May 9th, 2023.
All right, we'll make that... We'll make that A22, so the next exhibit from the applicant will be 23.
And then we have a May 11th, 2023 Van Cleef letter.
All right. A23, May... What was the date?
May 11th, 2023. Another Van Cleef, June 5th, 2024, which will be A24.
Yep.
And then his August 18th, 2024, uh, letter as well.
Will be A25.
Yeah, and that was... A25 is August 8th, 2024 letter.
Mm-hmm.
August 8th.
2024 will be A25.
And then do we want to handle the exhibits that were submitted? Well, I guess we do it when Gary Dean comes up?
It'll be slightly out of order, and as I indicated previously, the DEP, DRCC materials, et cetera, are not marked. They're not normally marked usually for this board. They're just part of the record. Those are outside entity. I believe, Mr. Chairman, at least my reading of the transcript, was the objectors were still cross-examining Mr. Ford. I think Mr. Pizzano had finished when we came to the end of that, which would at that point leave it to Mr. Gross in the number-two slot if he has any questions. I'd ask that Mr. Ford be re-s sworn in, just for purposes of the record. Mr. Lombardozzi?
Mr. Chairman, just if I may, just one really short item. Since Ms. Oxy wasn't permitted to testify, one of the things she was going to do is bring the petition, the citizen's petition that SWAT had sponsored, and so there's no other real time for us to present it. I understand that it's not something that can be entered into evidence, which is fine. We just would like to present it as an expression of the community's opposition to this application. So if I could have three minutes to just describe the petition, and then I have copies.
Mr. Chairman, I think we let Mr. Genetti have his moment that he's desperately waiting for, and then I'm gonna make a recommendation, depending on what I hear.
So I'm gonna object. It's standard practice in land use law staple that you cannot present letters or petitions as part of any presentation of objection. I don't have an opportunity to cross-examine anybody in not knowing, you know, how it was prepared and how they were gotten, and it's not appropriate. There's plenty of public here. We've heard a lot from the public already, and they'll have an opportunity again to be heard when the public comment comes.
I would also indicate, Mr. Chairman, two parts. One, this is really not the appropriate time, even if it was the appropriate time, to introduce that petition. If there is an appropriate time for Mr. Tarantino to have this conversation with the Board, it would be at the closing presentation of any comments he has at the end of the matter once all the testimony is in and the public has spoken. I would also advise him, and I am... This is not legal advice, that if you are representing a group of people who have signed this petition, somebody's liable to argue that they're all disqualified from coming up and speaking on behalf of the public if they've all signed a petition on behalf of a group that already has designated itself as an objector.
Well, signing the petition doesn't... Doesn't make them a member of SWAT.
I'd like to make the argument, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that if you want... Mr. Tarantino wants to make that presentation, it should be done during the closing arguments from the objectors.
I don't have a problem with that. Okay.
So we're back to Mr. Gross again.
I have no questions for Mr. Ford.
That leaves Mr. Tarantino next.
Yes, I do. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, Licensed Engineer and Planner in the state of New Jersey with Van Cleef Engineering.
And no changes or gaps since the last time you were here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Ford. At the... At the last meeting, at the February 13th meeting, do you recall your testimony regarding the removal of the second row? Oh, here we go. That's quite all right. Do you recall your testimony regarding the removal of the second row of trailer parking behind Building 2?
Yes, that was one of the planned changes that I described.
That's right. Do you recall... You mentioned that it was pointed out that compliance with Ordinance 18868B, which doesn't allow that second row of parking. You... I believe you mentioned that it was someone from the public. Do you recall who that was?
No, it's... We were directed by the applicant to remove that second row, and I... As I recall, it was after discussions with their planner.
Do you recall that it was actually testimony from Mr. Bill Martin, who is a local resident, on July 11th, 2024?
I know there was testimony about it, but I just answered your question why it was removed.
Okay. Now, are you familiar with the information required by the Hillsborough... Hillsborough Ordinance 108875C4? That's... Ordinance 108875C governs the disturbance of... Disturbance to land near pipelines.
Yes.
Section C4 requires a certain set of information being... Be provided. Do you recall where this information is provided in your drawings? I can tell you what the items are that are required. Sure. These include location, size, specified minimum yield strength, maximum allowable operating pressure, location class, and operating hoop stress as a percentage of the specified minimum yield strength of all pipelines located upon the subject property as surveyed by a professional land surveyor.
To answer your question, yes, I recall that information being required. In fact, it was brought up as part of the initial submittal of the application, and I believe it's on Sheet 2 of this set of plans.
Okay. Can you... The one piece of information that I don't see on Sheet 2, because I... And I've looked through all of the sheets to see if it was anyplace else, is the operating hoop stress as a percentage of the specified minimum yield strength. Can you point out where that is on Sheet 2?
I can't answer that right now, no.
Do you believe it's on that sheet?
Again, as I stated, during the completeness review of the application, that question, as I recall, back in probably 2021, was requested and asked by the township staff, and we replied to it with providing that information, and that was deemed acceptable.
So you said you provided that information on Sheet 2?
As I just stated, I can't answer your question about the hoop strength specifically. I don't know... I don't recall now, after these years, whether that was something that the pipeline company couldn't provide or did provide in a different manner, and we related it on the plans.
Okay. I mean, it's a missing piece of information, as well.
Objection. We don't need commentary. You asked a question, you answered it. In fact, I object to the line of questioning because it's beyond the scope of his rebuttal. He already testified. He was already testified on direct. This is not a second bite at the apple to ask whatever you want.
It most certainly is.
No, it's not. See, this is the problem.
It most certainly is. As Mr. Bernstein has informed us all that when you bring a rebuttal witness, anything they've... Anything they've testified to is fair game.
At rebuttal, not anything he's testified to, ever. You can only ask him questions about what he testified to in rebuttal. You already had an opportunity to cross-examine him.
No different than if it was on direct and cross. This is simply direct and cross on rebuttal related to rebuttal items.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Chapter 4? Any questions? And objector 5? Okay.
Public.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, I'm going a little slow. The caffeine hasn't kicked in. Well, actually, any comments from the... From the board members? Well, I'm gonna get out of order a little bit. Okay. Mr. Mayhew?
No, Mr. Chairman, I asked my question at the last...
Okay. Mr. Coys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can any motion open the public, please?
Second.
Only favor.
All right.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public who's not represented by one of the five objectors and would like to cross-examine Mr. Ford on his rebuttal, please.
Only.
Right. Rebuttal only, okay. Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Rich Garman, 53, Windings Way. I'm not affiliated with any objectors. At your last rebuttal or testimony, you mentioned a fourth retention basin. Could you explain how that one's gonna work?
That was an underground basin where a small-scale subsurface infiltration basin by Building 1. There were already three under the parking and paved areas at that site, and we added a fourth one. And that's for groundwater recharge.
Okay, so there's no outflow pipe into the stream or anything?
That would continue and be connected to the onsite stormwater collection system and run through the main above-ground detention basin on that site.
All right, so that main retention basin, if I can ask this, that outflow pipe exits where in the stream?
That hasn't changed, and it's to the rear of Building 1, downstream of your property.
Right, but it... It's at the base of the stream? Or is it up on the hill, or?
No, it... Part of our Somerset Union Soil Conservation District approval was demonstrating stability at that discharge, and they required that it be right at the stream itself. So it's right at the... At that tributary.
If you don't mind, could you explain a little bit how that works? My understanding, right, you have the pipe, you have the retention, water's held back. When the stream water is over the pipe, it's not gonna release into the stream. Is that correct, or?
No, it still would. It's a hydraulic question you're asking, and there's... There's a substantial head, if you will, a differential in elevation between where that basin is and where that discharge is. And part of our analysis of the discharge at the basin is taking into consideration what you're describing, which what I would refer to as tailwater. You know, the water surface downstream to the basin.
Well, I'm concerned about those retention basins. We've all agreed there's a 70-foot elevation difference in the property. So you've got, let's just conservative, say, 100,000 gallons of water sitting up there, applying pressure down that pipe. Water flowing downstream picks up a great force. So isn't it gonna dump into that stream regardless of the water level and just add to it? How are you controlling the pressure that's created from that water being 70 feet higher than the stream?
As I just mentioned, as part of the analysis, the computer modeling takes into consideration that headwater and the outlet structure discharge considers what's flowing into it and then what is downstream of it that might restrict its flow out. So that's already been taken into consideration as part of the model.
Okay. So what was the reason? You sort of briefed over it for the fourth retention basin.
It was part of our NJDEP review of the flood hazard area permit that they've issued in order to satisfy their questions regarding the groundwater recharge element. And also, there was prior comment, believed by the objectors engineer, that with three underground basins, by Building 1, mathematically, there could be more than 2.5 acres going to any one of those basins. So by providing a fourth one, mathematically, it demonstrates that there would never be more than that 2.5-acre threshold to any one of those basins.
All right. A little bit of my concern here is why we should be trusting of any of it, because I spent a lot of time going through all of your testimony, which you've done quite a bit, and you were always stressing how conservative you were and how you were nowhere near the limits of what you could be discharging. And now it goes to DEP review, and all of a sudden it changed plans.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, should we trust everything you told us for the last six testimonies?
Let me... So the... The technical issue with NJDEP, and this has evolved over time, too, with the Chapter 12 Stormwater Soil Testing Criteria. The two underground basins that we still have by Building 2, we consider it as part of our recharge element. And in support of those two areas, there was what was known as a pit bail test done in the fractured rock at that location. And that's an alternate... Originally, in DEP's rules, it was actually Chapter E or Pending C of the BMP manual that dictated stormwater testing permissions. And the pit bail test was on that list. Subsequently, DEP made a change in their criteria and took it off the list. That was the only test that we could do there because we were in groundwater, and you can't do a basin flood test in groundwater. And as part of our DEP application, we asserted that under their current Chapter 12 regulations, that would be an acceptable alternate test. Rather than to continue, go back and forth with DEP to try to substantiate that and have them accept that, we also, at the same time, went out and did supplemental testing to find a fourth site for an underground basin on chapter... On... Behind Building 1. So again, it... We didn't take away the two that we provided before, and we're not taking any credit for them. And we added the fourth one to basically take the path that DEP had no disputes with and was consistent with their updated soil testing procedures where they took off that one test.
Okay.
So it's a matter of over time, really, regulations changing. We've been working on this for a little while, and DEP has made some changes as well. And part of the guidance documents are dictated by policy, and even DEP policy changes from time to time, and we have to adjust to it.
Okay. One last thing, and I don't know if you'll know this or not, but there must be a flow rate somewhere listed for that stream, right? The Royce Brook? Some kind of standard flow rate or something on how much volume of water it can handle? Is there something like that?
I'm not aware of any analysis that says how much it can handle. As part of our DEP submittal, we did identify the flood hazard area along the Royce Brook Tributary, or the Royce Brook... Yeah, the Royce Brook Tributary at that point, as well as the other tributary on site. And that was part of the DEP's review, not just the stormwater analysis, but the flood hazard area. hazard area elevation or water surface in all the streams regulated by DEP on site.
All right. My concern there is, you know, if it goes back 30 years for the last time they checked the flow rate, you know, the Sewage Authority maintains a right-of-way 60 feet wide along that stream. And when they take down debris and such, they pile it up next to the stream. So every time there's a flood, it ends up in the stream. That's going to impact how much water that stream can hold because I never see anybody cleaning the stream. So I've noticed in the time I've lived there, the water's getting closer and closer to my house. And I'm sure that has a big impact. So it could skew all of these, you know, figures if that hasn't been checked. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Merrill Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road, not represented by SWAT. I just want to ask a question that actually preceded your testimony, Mr. Ford, at the last meeting, but just barely preceded it. It was stated that, right before introducing you, that, not by an expert witness, but that this will not be a sort fulfillment center, won't be a transload warehouse, and not a parcel delivery hub. So this was not stated by a subject matter expert, the operations person, this is by Mr. Giannetti. So I'm going to ask you, do you understand why this was stated now when we completed operations testimony a year and a half ago, prior to your being a witness, last meeting?
I'm going to, A, object because it's beyond his scope and he didn't testify to it, and B, as I stated at the last meeting, it was a confirmation of basically testimony that was previously provided by the architect that, in our traffic, this isn't designed to be a transload facility, or this isn't designed to be a parcel hub. So we wanted it clear on the record that we're standing by that, that as any condition it can be, this will not be a parcel delivery hub, or a transload facility, or a sort fulfillment center.
Okay, so I was one of the people that asked the questions of Mr. Valenza at that meeting when it was first stated, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, because this seems to be a restatement of operations testimony.
It's not operations testimony, it's what the applicant is agreeing to this board.
Okay. Well, the questions I remember being asked of the operations of Mr. Valenza, whether or not, and I have the testimony right here, whether or not it could be a high cube, whether it could be bonded, whether it could be cold storage. Those don't really track what the warehouse types you're talking about. There's crossover. So, you know, I understand why, for instance, Mr. Wagner said, well, what could it be? Because everybody uses a different classification for warehouses, and it seems like all of a sudden, a year and a half later, where the testimony's different. And this is, you know, it's a sore spot because we don't have the information on operations. And I do wonder how, if you could state clearly what it's not going to be, it has to mean that there's some idea of what it will be. So.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, Mr. Giannetti is not going to give testimony on what it will be or what it won't be. I believe this was stated at the last meeting as well, that the statements are being taken for what they are, and that when the board deliberates, it will look at the evidence before it, or does, isn't before it, and attempt to determine whether or not it qualifies or doesn't. So I don't really think a rehashing of what it won't be versus what it might be, unless there's going to be testimony specifically about it, is going to be any different than what we've already heard.
Okay, I would just like to recommend to the board that that testimony by Mr. Valenza was September 14, 2023.
This is strictly just questions on Mr. Ford's.
That's an issue you can raise during the public portion at the end.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to ask Mr. Ford how he determined that he could include trailer parking in the design. I realize that goes back earlier, but there was an issue about trailer parking as recently as the last meeting, so I believe it can be crossed. Seeing as there are no provisions for trailer parking in our building code, in Hillsborough's building code, and the T E C D zone is silent on trailer parking. The only definition for parking in our code, besides a specification for dock trucks, is a 10 by 20-foot parking space, which clearly is not appropriate for tractor trailer parking or trailer parking. So I guess my question is, how did he come up with the dimensions?
I'm going to object on two things. One, it's already been asked and answered why he changed the plans. We disagree with their legal interpretation that it's not permitted, but it was raised, and he already testified, based upon consulting with the planner and the applicant, we decided to remove it. But we don't agree with the proposition that trailer parking is prohibited, or stacked trailer parking is prohibited.
Okay, I did not say it was prohibited. I said there's no specification for trailer parking in the code. So I was asking how he determined what size the parking spot should be, since the only parking in our code is 10 by 20.
Mr. Giannetti, are you advising Mr. Ford not to answer the question?
That question.
That question.
He can answer.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, you're right. The code is silent on it, and from our experience on other similar projects, that's a suitable parking area for that type of vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if they've ever been approved before in Hillsborough?
Yes, we've had other projects that have parking spaces for trailers.
And when they are of the same dimension? Or generally?
Yes.
I'm not sure what another application has to do with this one, so we're going to let this one stand on its own.
Well, he's explaining how he determines appropriate size. I'm telling, and he answered the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members? And don't be shy, you guys can stack up so we don't.
David Brooke, Winding Way. I have a bunch of maps, but obviously I don't have a podium or place to lay them out, so I'll try to cover this without going through all the maps, and hopefully it's understandable from everybody's point of view. And if we could actually get the drawings up, it would actually be helpful.
Question, please.
Mr. Ford, you've been the engineer of record for Homestead Road LLC since the beginning of these hearings, before the planning board, I think it was April of 2022, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's safe to say that you've actually been involved even prior to that time in order to formulate the engineering drawings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's also correct to state that you and your engineering firm have been responsible for any of the changes or updates that were submitted to this board as it relates to the two proposed warehouses?
Regarding the site plans, yes.
Yes. That includes the revised engineering drawings that were submitted to the township on November 20th, 2024, correct?
I don't have the last submittal date in front of me. I don't dispute any document that was submitted by our office and is of record on Civic Clerk and has been marked as applicant exhibits.
Okay. It's also safe to state that you and your firm follow all state, federal, county, local, and other applicable engineering and land use requirements for this proposed development, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in the proposal for subdividing the property that you've shown on the revised November 20, 2024 map 5B, there's a proposed lot line change that basically goes from Homestead Road north to the property line. Is that correct?
Part of my rebuttal testimony didn't have anything to do with the subdivision aspects of the application.
Very true, very true. But it did have to do with drainage, correct?
I reported to the board our securing of the NJDEP flood hazard area approval, which included stormwater review, as well as the Delaware and American Canal Commission's review, and then also discussed comments relating to the objector engineering report.
So I think I'm allowed to lay a little bit of a foundation, so hopefully we will agree that this lot line would create two new lots. Is that correct?
Again, I'm going to object, he did not testify in his rebuttal, anything about this subdivision?
You wanted to have a lot line, just what was your question?
I was getting there. I'll get there in a minute. Okay, so we'll just jump ahead a little bit. As to that subdivision of the two properties, again, I'll note on drawing 5B that you show the drainage from the northernmost pond constructed wetland that goes from revised lot 32 into revised lot 33. Was there any change in the drawings for that update?
No.
And I guess my question for that is, is it a good idea to subdivide the property and then have one property owner drain their stormwater on another owner's property? Because ultimately, those will be two separate lots.
That's not uncommon, and it can just be handled by an easement.
Do you propose a drainage easement, since without this, one could consider it to be a trespass?
Yeah, I don't recall as part of the subdivision whether we proposed an easement, or that was one of the comments from the board engineer that we agreed to deal with as any condition of approval. So I don't recall.
Would you have made a note on the drawings with regards to any easements that were added to the proposal?
Yeah, again, at the last hearing, I was dealing with the changes regarding the trailer parking, the DEP approval, and the comments regarding the objector's engineer. I didn't speak to the subdivision, and I don't recall now, again, whether we showed an easement at that location or not, but certainly that could be provided, and it was agreement between two properties that the applicant has control over.
So let me just clarify, there is nothing in the drawings that you're aware of that identifies any easements that you're adding to the proposed development subdivision?
No, there's several easements identified with regards to, or I should say, trains where discharges for the basins are located. We agreed to provide conservation easement in accordance with the township and DNR Canal Commission requirements. I don't know that the limits of that easement have been finalized or shown on a subdivision plan yet.
You mentioned that with building number one, you are adding a new subsurface drainage recharge? Is that the right term for it?
The technical DEP terminology is small-scale subsurface infiltration basin, and yes, we've already added that fourth one to the plans.
And I didn't see on the drawing, how close is that to any of the retaining walls that you're constructing on building number one?
That is not any closer to the retaining walls than any of the other basins.
But do you actually have a measurement? I just wanted to clarify proximity to the retaining walls.
For that specific basin that we've added?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. As it relates to the retaining walls, there are roughly, the proxy, let me just rephrase that. From the westerly side of the building footprint, there's approximately 250 linear feet to the stream, and it's an approximately 30-foot drop. Is that correct?
I don't think I can answer your question because I don't know specifically where you're referring to. But there is strong slopes along the, you know, the drainage features on the site.
Just to clarify, this is a drawing 5A that had elevations on it. So as it relates to those retaining walls, there were symbols on the walls that were not in your, in the chart, and I just wanted to clarify what those meant. There's a TW. Does that indicate top of the wall?
Yes.
And BW indicates the bottom of the wall?
Normally, it's BW or bottom of wall.
Were there any changes with regards to this recharge, no, is it, I'm sorry, recharge basin? Were there any changes to any of the wall heights as it related to this new drainage facility?
I don't recall any changes to any of the detailed design of the grading around the walls. There may have been spot shots added to clarify grading that was already on the plans regarding those walls.
Okay. And then one question about the other wall, I guess it's on the northerly side. I'm seeing a TW 93 and a BW of, I'm sorry, a TW of 98.35 and a BW of 78, which is indicating that that wall is 20 feet tall. Is that correct?
Based on those two numbers, that would be correct.
Okay. Just to give the board a sense of it, do you have any idea how tall the ceiling is in here? Or let me try it differently. Would you agree that the ceiling in this room is 9 feet 11 inches? Or would you believe that that's an accurate measurement?
I thought you were asking.
Let's try it differently.
What's the point? Yeah, just get to, all right?
I just want to clarify, Mr. Ford, the ceiling in this room is 9 feet 11 inches, which means that that wall that you're referring to is twice as tall as the ceiling. Is that correct?
Going to object, he's assuming facts, not in evidence, that the ceiling height is 9 feet 11 inches.
I brought my tape measure, Mr. Giannetti, and I'm more than happy to show it to you.
In ladder?
No, I can just push it right up the wall. It works. Okay. The point is, it's a tall wall. Is that correct?
The retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'm also going to understand that these are not simple railroad-type walls like we do at our house. So I'm guessing they require very careful engineering in order to withstand the tremendous pressures that are exerted by the fill on one side of the wall? Is that correct?
Again, this wasn't part of what I testified at the last hearing, I believe it was a previous hearing, and we did have, as I recall, lengthy discussion about the retaining walls. And perhaps even, I outlined it at the last hearing, that as part of, or any retaining wall design, there's a building permit, a construction permit required. The board can't issue the permit to construct the wall. There's actually a specific construction permit that's required for retaining wall, anything over four feet high, and that includes structural calculations for the wall. And again, I think I shared at the last hearing that between now and the time of construction, the available type of materials for a modular block retaining wall, or the type of wall that the applicant may choose to install, could change, and that's why, you know, there's not details provided at this time, but there's details provided in advance of a construction permit.
Okay, thank you. On building number two, you've revised the plans to eliminate Okay, thank you. On building number two, you've revised the plans to eliminate the retaining wall. I believe you testified to that at the last hearing.
Yes.
That's next to the CSX railroad tracks, correct?
Correct.
This means that now there will be a declining slope of approximately 14 feet drop. I measured it over about 50 feet. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, it's a I described at the last hearing by virtue of eliminating that second row of trailer parking.
Well, that wasn't the question.
Well, I'm trying to use.
I'm just asking you if it dropped 14 feet.
Let me answer it. If you have a follow-up to the answer he gives you, you're more than welcome to try.
You're trying to make sure that I'm doing this as briefly as possible. I'm trying to instruct the witness to do the same.
You don't get to instruct the witness. You don't get to tell the witness the answer you want. God knows, we all like that in the legal profession.
Mr. Bernstein, I'm not trying to do that, but you're.
Just ask him the question, and if you don't like the answer, ask a follow-up.
Okay, thank you for your advice.
Yeah, the the grade is a gentle grade now without a retaining wall, three to one or less. It's a mowable grade.
Okay, that means that you will need to excavate within some proximity of the railroad line. Is that correct?
Recall my testimony at the last hearing is our limited disturbance is about 15, 20 feet from the property line, which is common with the railroad right-of-way. And then from there, the disturbance onto our site would include excavating existing material, correct?
Okay, I also note on your revised plan, this is 6B, that it shows no landscaping of any kind on that slope. Is that correct?
I don't dispute that. We I don't believe we had any landscaping in that area already. All the proposed landscaping or tree mitigation has been concentrated in the areas along the the streams. And that area would be lawn.
I'm sorry, that area would be what?
Lawn.
Lawn, okay. Do you have any plans to permanently stabilize this sloping hill to prevent erosion along the CSX tracks?
Again, that would be lawn that would be stabilized with grass.
Okay, Mr. Ford, you're familiar with the CSX Public Project Manual and the CSX requirements for preliminary engineering reviews?
No, I'm not familiar with that specific document.
Okay, well, page 12 states, "Any project proposals that may affect or be near the CSX."
Objection. If he was going to be wanting to ask our witness about a particular document, he should have submitted it beforehand or at least provided him a copy of it.
I'm sorry, but this is a public record, and this is an engineer who deals with all sorts of issues. I guess I could ask, Mr. Ford, have you ever dealt with any projects next to railroads? But strike that. We're not going to go there. I'd like to ask a question as it relates to this development along this railroad track.
But he's asking about a document that he said he's not aware of.
You might want to consult with your client before we go there, but I'll just keep going. If I may, I was going to read the language from the manual?
No.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, if you if the witnesses indicated that he is not familiar with it, if at a point in time during the public presentation, Mr. Brook, you would like to make that as a salient point relative to the validity or the propriety of Mr. Ford's testimony, that's when you get to do it.
I would disagree with Mr. Mr. Bernstein vehemently, simply because of the fact that we have an engineer of record in the state.
He's indicated he's not familiar with it. You can't. You cannot ask him.
I will be more than happy to hand these particular pages to him so he can look at them.
Nope.
Okay, well, that makes things interesting. So, Mr. Ford, are you aware of an email that you received from the engineering company that represents CS CSX, Mr. Kevin Lewandowski?
Going to object again as to relevancy and beyond any testimony he provided as to CSX at the last meeting.
It relates to the change of the grade, which he testified to. This is extremely relevant.
Well, state the question, including whatever the relevancy is. Don't just ask him. Don't ask if he had. Just get to the question.
I'm asking if he is familiar with the engineering firm, Kevin Lewandowski. I'll be more than happy to give him the email if he needs it.
What's the question?
Well, I didn't hear an answer. Are you familiar with an email communication from Kevin Lewandowski from Collier Engineering dated August 8, 2024?
Okay, yeah, as as I stated at the last hearing, there was some discussion about the changes we made next to the rail line and our communication with the representative of the rail line back in August of 2024. And I indicated that we shared with him at that time the proposed grade change, which alleviated, and I had a discussion with him in addition to the the gentleman I believe you're referring to, in addition to the email communication, and that alleviated, and this is what I reported to the board, that alleviated his concern immediate about the potential impacts of the retaining walls close proximity to the retaining wall or of the retaining walls close proximity to the railroad right-of-way, and that the grading, the I'll call gentle grading slope down from the right-of-way was much better, and that I believe Mr. Mahew said at the last hearing that should the board grant approval, would the applicant agree to addressing any the rail line applicable requirements to the board's engineer, you know, the board's engineering satisfaction? And as I recall, our our statement was yes.
Yes. Let's just go back to the email because I'm not sure I heard an answer to that. You're familiar with this email, right, from August of 2024? And the fact that in it, it simply said that.
Objection again. He's referring to an email. He's asking about an email that's not of record. We don't know what he has or what he's looking at right now. And it's not relevant to his testimony at the last meeting.
Actually, that's not the case. And your client's representative just testified, in fact, to the opposite response. He indicated that there were communications, there were conversations, there was material discussed. I also believe he did indicate, while I split this thing right down the middle, is that he did indicate that he was familiar with emails. He may not have been familiar with the date per se, but he was familiar with the email. Therefore, I believe he's answered the question, and Mr. Brook can move on to the next one.
Sure. Okay, so as it relates to the question that I'm asking, on March 11, I believe you may have received another email from the engineer, Mr. Lewandowski, asking you to.
A year.
This year.
Thank you.
March 11, 2025.
Thank you.
If he's going to testify about an email, he's claiming Mr. Ford has seen, he should show him the email.
Well.
They should give it to him.
Would you like a moment to look at it?
First, Mr. Brook?
You may have noticed I was CC'd on the email.
Yeah, and I wasn't. You just referred to a March 11, 2025 email that I would have received, and it looks like.
Well.
I don't see my name on that email. I do see the March 8 email to me. August, I'm sorry, August 8, 2024 email. And yes, we haven't had any further communication. I stated that at the last hearing as well. Just like any other outside agency, we've gotten to a point with the plans where we feel they'd be acceptable and we would agree to address any applicable requirements.
Okay, that's great. I stand corrected. March 3 of this year was Kevin Lewandowski's email to you, second page.
Yeah, and that the the document you just handed me doesn't have the heading on it that that has my address on it, my email address. So I I don't recall, I haven't seen, I don't recall, I'll say factually, I haven't seen the March 3 email. And again, I don't dispute that we haven't had further communication with the CMX engineering consultant since August.
So if I could turn your attention to the August 8 email, 2024, would you agree that the language in there on the second line says, "The project will impact CSXT, and we will need to review plans to ensure the safety of CSXT operations"?
Don't dispute what you've just read, and I'm at this juncture not sure that the August 8 communication is the last communication we had with the representative from CMX. And like I said earlier, the communication with CMX started with, I think, the town staff's referral of the project to CMX, them bringing that issue to our attention, us sharing with the CMX representative that we were removing the trailer parking and the retaining wall and pulling back the grades, and that document being shared with them, and the discussion I had with the CMX engineering representative that that was alleviating the major concerns that he would have had with the retaining walls proximity.
Right, it I'm I'm sorry, CSX is you're referring to?
CSX, yes.
Okay. You also note in this email that the representative, Kevin Lewandowski, is saying that you or someone as the applicant needs to execute an agreement with them for them to review it. Are you aware as to whether you or anyone at Van Cleef Engineering has in the last three years executed any agreement to have a review of your plans by CSX?
Not aware of it. That would be typical, just like any other utility company impact. Often, an applicant would wait until board action before they address all of the outside agency approvals. Like I said, I think at the last hearing, because we've been at this some time, that we were able to process and secure the DEP approvals for the freshwater wetland or for the flood hazard area, but.
Mr. Ford, are you familiar with such document?
Which documents, sir?
The document that Mr. Brook just asked you. Familiar whether or not you or Van Cleef ever submitted such a document?
I recall.
It's a yes or no question.
Yes, the the agreement and what what CSX asked us to do prior to construction. Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the answer. Are you saying that you have executed an engineering agreement with CSX at this point?
No, that would be that would be an executive agreement between the owner or the builder or or project owner and that entity. And to this is unique because it's next to the railroad and CSX is what we're talking about, but this is not any different than New Jersey American Water, where you have to execute an agreement to for a water main extension. But that comes with its substantial costs and, you know, as far as the sequence of project reviews, typically, an applicant would wait until board action before they go on with those types of agreements. So it's not uncommon.
I'm also going to draw your attention to the next sentence, which says, "I encourage you to review the CSX Public Project Manual." Do you remember reading those words in that email?
I read the whole email at the time, sir, so I don't dispute that. And again, like I stated earlier, this may be an earlier email in the sequence of communication with that entity. And as I recall, the the discussion ended with the serious concerns being alleviated. And yes, prior to construction, you need to perhaps go with this agreement. In fact, as I recall, the discussion with Mr. Lewandowski, it was, for example, the question was, how far away from the rail right-of-way do we need to be with our disturbance to not trigger this type of review? And there wasn't really a specific answer, because perhaps we would, you know, endeavor to even limit the disturbance even further back. And and that I recall there being a statement on his behalf that now that the if if indeed the grading is revised per the sketch I provided to him and the way we've reported to the board, we've made that change, there may be even a determination at the time this agreement stage is entered into that it's not even applicable anymore because the disturbance is so minimal and and far away from the property.
Now, I'm glad that you remember, Mr. Lewandowski. You are referring to what type of communication? Is this an oral on the phone or is this an email communication with him?
Like I've said already, there are both.
I would only encourage that those communications be provided to the township so they can see them. As it relates to building number two, with the change of the slope and the elimination of the retaining wall, the other retaining walls were not impacted, I'm presuming, by that?
No.
Okay, and would you also agree that the heights of those retaining walls that remain are still anywhere from 10, 12, 15, as much as 21 feet tall for building number two?
I would have to review the plans to give specifics as part of that prior testimony. This wasn't part of the rebuttal, but yes, they're tall retaining walls.
Okay, and with the change of the retaining walls, I don't know if you had ever given a total lineal footage, but I did a quick count, and does 2,075 feet of retaining walls sound correct for the change that took place?
I don't have a number. We provided a cost estimate, as I recall, a couple of years ago about this application, but whether, you know, I don't have a total linear foot of retaining wall.
Okay, on drawing 4C, that was also updated to 2724, you've made a notation on both sides of the Texas Eastern Pipeline, currently Embridge, that states 75, in quotes, 75-foot pipe easement setback. Is that correct?
Yeah, that that refers to a township standard, not the Embarck standard.
Okay, I believe that 75-foot is based upon the Township Ordinance 18875 that Mr. Tarantino had talked to you about prior?
You're asking me the same question again. I just said it was part of a township ordinance, trying to be brief.
Correct, but I want to make sure we're on the right one. Section 18875, correct?
I don't have the number memorized. It's a township standard, sir, and this was not part of the rebuttal testimony, but please.
Mr. Brook, can you have a question that's related to the 75 feet?
It is, yes.
That also includes Mr. Chairman's responses to questions. So it may not have been raised during the direct, but it was raised during cross. So if he knows the answer, fine. If he doesn't, he doesn't.
Or?
I think he's looking for something, Mr. Brook.
No, I was trying to just refer to plans and look at them while I was waiting for the next question.
So just for clarity, Ordinance 18875C1 states.
Objection. Ask an answer. He asked the question. He said he doesn't recall the number. He just said the Texas, the setback designation was based upon a town ordinance. And as he stated, this was not within the scope of his rebuttal testimony. He did not talk about the easement or the setback.
He did talk about changes that took place on the proposal.
Mr. Brook, I think the point's been. Mr. Brook, I think the point's been made, and I think the boards are aware of it.
I'm trying to get to the ordinance, and if I can simply ask the question as to the wording, it's kind of important to carry on, I can just...
If you have the ordinance, you can show it to him.
You need to show it to him or ask about the wording specifically.
Here's the ordinance. Thank you. It's 18875C1.
Yeah, Public Utilities is the title.
Correct.
Section C is regarding pipelines.
Would you like to read C1, or should I read C1?
That's, "No building, construction, or land disturbance shall be permitted with 75 feet of the right-of-way of any distribution, gathering, or transmission line as defined in this chapter."
Right. So you followed that restriction when you delineated the 75-foot setback for no disturbances. Is that correct?
That would, that's why we're delineating that area on the plan.
I also noticed that you proposed not plant any trees or shrubs in that 75-foot setback. Is that because of the ordinance prohibition?
There may have been other areas of restricted restrictions when, within where those trees were designated, so it might not be exclusive to the 75 feet. It could be, you know, because of the, along the stream, there's the HTMUA sewer line.
If you had, so if you had wanted to plant anything in there, I'm assuming under the ordinance, you would need to get some kind of hardship to intrude upon that. Is that correct?
For planting of trees, I would say at the, you know, the town ordinance or planting of trees might not be considered as disturbance and, you know, just disturbance is usually changing of grade or filling or cutting. And with a tree, you perhaps don't have to change the grade.
Okay. And I guess the simple question that I wanted to ask as it relates to that is, is there a particular reason why you haven't sought some hardship waiver as it relates to the road crossing that you're proposing over the 75-foot buffer?
I know, it's...
Say, we, he didn't testify to that. He previously testified to the waiver we saw, as did our planner. We did not address it any further on rebuttal because there was no change to it.
As to the waiver, if I may, Mr. Giannetti, apparently you made a statement at the June 22nd hearing that stated that you were going to have that additional testimony provided by the planner. Do you recall that in a report that was going to be submitted? And I'd like to ask the board or Mr. Ford if he's aware of any additional testimony that was provided as it relates to this, since the planner wasn't in a position to present that testimony. And if you would like, I will read that short little section from the transcript because that's, to me, extremely important. It goes like this, "Mr. Giannetti, at this point, it's been asked and answered," this was referring to me, "he's asked it five different ways. He may not like the answer, but it's been asked and answered. We do have additional planning testimony that will address the relief being sought. Mr. Bernstein, has the planner provided that information? Mr. Giannetti, not in a report yet. That will be submitted 10 days prior to her testimony. So I've read the planner's letters and heard her testimony, and she never provided any explanation. And I would ask Mr. Ford, is she qualified to prepare engineering drawings for crossing the pipeline?"
The, when you say she, I...
Miss Cofone, my apologies.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, that a license, I don't know exactly what her qualifications are, so I really can't answer that question. I know she's a licensed professional planner, I don't know what other qualifications she may have.
May I ask you if a licensed professional planner can submit engineering drawings? I think we both know the answer is no.
I'm going to, if this whole, our position is, the testimony was provided previously in the record. If his position is, no, it wasn't, then we can deal with that on summations.
If I may, would somebody help Mr. Giannetti tell us all where that is in the record, since I've never seen it?
We weren't coming up here to address it, so I can't...
Actually, if it's in the record, we'll have to address it. If it's not in the record, then we'll take it accordingly.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to grab my ordinance back, if I may.
Nope, nope.
Thank you.
Oh, here.
Thank you.
Any other members from the public? Don't be shy, don't look around. If you want to get up, get up, because I see people looking around, so. All right, so we're done with Mr. Ford, I see no new takers. How you doing, Mike?
Good.
It's probably is, because we're going to be moving. Okay. We are going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene 8:35, according to the black back clock.
TV on. There we go, we're back. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Sheehan, Eddie?
Thank you, Chairman. At this point, we'd like to call our traffic engineer, Gary Dean, up for rebuttal.
Yeah, Mr. Dean, we'll swear you back in.
Yes, I do. Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N.
And any changes to your qualifications?
No, Mr. Chairman, still licensed engineer credentials are current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Dean, since your last testimony, did you have an opportunity to read or hear the testimony of the objectors' traffic engineer?
Yes, I did.
And since that time, did your office prepare a report in response to that testimony?
I did, and that's submitted an address to the board in the form of a letter dated February 28th of this year.
Do we want to have that marked as an exhibit now? I think we're at A26.
A26, Mr. Lombardozzi.
Was that already submitted as A15?
This was not part of the ones that were in the meeting, so the next exhibit is... I think it's 26. A26. And we indicated date and who the author was.
I authored the letter, Mr. Bernstein.
From Dolan and Dean?
Correct.
A26.
So, Mr. Dean, using or based upon what you heard, can you just provide your response from a traffic engineering perspective as it relates to truck trip generation that was testified to by the objectors' witness, as well as, you know, the use of ITE information with respect to that?
Certainly. My recollection of both the objectors' written report, as well as his testimony, was trying to posit that by looking at a warehouse facilities, the number of loading docks that a given building might have, that that would be a better predictor of the truck traffic that could be generated. And we looked at the data that we had collected and previously submitted to this board for roughly 10 or 11 different warehouse sites in New Jersey and one site in Pennsylvania. We inventoried the number of loading docks at each facility, which at the time of our study, each one of those buildings was fully occupied and leased. And even though the objectors' expert could have done the work himself, he nevertheless speculated that, well, it might yield a higher statistical model. Our exercise looked at the data, and in our February 28th report, summarized the data and found that there was essentially zero correlation between the number of loading docks that a given warehouse might have and the number of truck trips or truck traffic that would be generated.
And I guess at the end of your report, you basically took what was previously marked into evidence as Exhibit A10, which was your truck trip comparison, and included that same chart, but added another table for loading docks, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Can you just discuss some of your findings with respect to that?
Certainly, and to summarize very succinctly, appended to that report, A26, we provided the same statistical sampling that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, uses when they publish their data. And what you will see presented on the screen and in the report are two charts, first labeled "Morning Peak Hour", warehouse truck trip generation, and the number of trips per loading dock. And then the second chart is Evening Peak Hour. And you will see in the bottom right-hand corner is a number. It is R squared. And that is a statistical representation of how close the equation, the model, predicts the truck traffic. And you will see there's no correlation whatsoever. The R squared value in the Morning Peak Hour is 0.1749, and in the Evening, it is 0.0099. What that means in engineering or statistics is that there's no relationship in the data in terms of truck docks being able to accurately forecast traffic. In fact, the data shows, particularly in the Morning Peak Hour, there are some very large buildings. A building that is having 100 loading docks generates the same truck activity, essentially, as a building with 10 loading docks. So, and we get into the Evening Peak Hour, you will see buildings that have the same thing, a lot of loading docks and very little truck activity, ranging between four and six vehicles generally. So, in terms of traffic engineering, I look at this data. I am refuting the objectors' expert that there is any relationship between the number of loading docks and the truck projections, and that I have continued to rely on, that has been buttressed by the collection of data at actual warehouses in New Jersey, that the equations and predictions and the statistics, the actual numbers of truck trips, is fairly consistent and consistently low throughout the sites that not only we have studied, but that ITE has studied based on the size of the building. And so, whether that building has a lot of docks or whether it has a few docks, it's the size of the building that is a better predictor of projected traffic. And as a result of this analysis, the independent statistics that we have presented to the board specifically for New Jersey sites, and finally, the ITE data that I will submit, that our findings are reliable for the purposes of this board's consideration, that the truck traffic is not overly significant in terms of it being orders of magnitude in volume. We're not talking about 100 trucks or 200 trucks per hour. It is a volume that generally ranges fairly minimally between five and 10 trips per hour, which equates to five in, five out. And with that, I find that the objectors' expert has really raised an issue. We appreciate the opportunity to review it, though, again, that could have been done on his own. But I cannot find any evidence to support his conclusion, and I will continue to stand by my initial findings.
And as part of those findings, it was your opinion that the standard of practice or recommended practice for ITE is to use square footage in their land use code categories for estimating vehicle traffic, truck traffic?
It shows the highest statistical correlation, and for a very good reason, is that when we, traffic engineers, study, we know what a building is. Anytime we study it, we know exactly the size of the building. What varies over time is how many people may be assigned to the building, how many people may actually be in the building, how many people may be employees of the building but are not on-site. And that varies at every location, so there is no statistical accuracy we can glean from that. And I will continue, in my practice, to use building area as the most consistent variable that can be measured and recorded in terms of a projection of anticipated traffic.
And I guess there was also an exhibit we submitted... Do you recognize this document, if we can mark it A27?
Yes.
And just simply, I guess for ease of reference, it looks like you took the various land use codes, land use ITE codes in all the various vehicle and trip generations associated with it. Is that basically what this document is showing?
Yes, what this document shows, and the board may recall, I know it's been some time, there are roughly five different warehouse categories in ITE, much in the way, we can say it's a restaurant, but the Ryland Inn is very different than McDonald's in terms of, they're both restaurants, but they have very different characteristics. The information you have on this chart is for different types of warehouses. And in our study, we have excluded, the applicant has excluded two specific types of warehouses from this particular application, simply because the building is not designed for those warehouses, nor is there sufficient parking and truck accommodations for those buildings that generate substantially more traffic.
Actually, it was three, it was the parcel hub, the transload, and the sort fulfillment center.
Yes, that is correct. Those were, I'll say, taken off the table. And what this chart was intended to provide the board with is a bit of an education, an understanding of these different warehouse types. And as applied to the proposed building areas of 537,290 square feet, what the projected traffic, both for overall traffic as well as trucks, would be for each of the different warehouse types. And as we exclude the ones, including the parcel hub category, the sorting fulfillment center, and the... The transload, thank you, sorry. From the equation, the category we used, which is Land Use Code 150 warehousing, yields the highest projections of traffic. And for that reason, to provide this board with a conservative traffic study, we used that category in our analyses. To the extent this site is occupied by the other categories, all will have lower traffic characteristics.
That's all, we have a direct examination of Mr., unless you have anything else you'd like to add?
I do not.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, there is. We, at a prior meeting, or actually during the cross-examination, I believe, of the objectors' witness, there was questions about your chart in whether those buildings were occupied. And was your testimony that, based on your recollection of the research, those buildings were occupied? And there is a question about a particular building where an objector relied upon an internet listing that a building may have been not occupied. Do you recall that?
Vaguely, yes. I don't recall which site.
And do you recall there is a... Do you recall there being contact with the real estate broker for the building in question? Which I'm bringing up and is marked as Exhibit A12 already regarding 111 Cokesbury Road in Clinton.
At the time we conducted our studies, we ascertained that the buildings were fully leased and occupied. If they hadn't been, we would have used the occupied square footage in our calculations so that the data we collected was accurate for the building area. However, in each instance, we confirmed through the owner and/or the brokers that the buildings at the time of our studies were fully occupied. The only reason I can surmise that an internet listing may have shown available space is that it was anticipated that a tenant would be at some point at the end of their lease, and the premises at some future date would become available. Just marketing 101. But at the time we conducted our studies, each of those buildings was fully occupied.
And I have here an email dated October 31st, 2024, from Chuck Fern, from Cushman Wakefield, who was a listing broker, to you. Do you recall this email?
Yes.
And in that email, did he confirm that the building has been 100? And in that email, did he confirm that the building has been 100% occupied for the past 10 years?
Yes.
Now that's all we have. Any questions of the board?
Sorry, I forgot. I gotta go to the objectors first. Sorry, guys.
Do we go to the board first or the objectors first? Whichever is your preference.
We'll go to the objectors first.
Scott Gross, objector number two. Mr. Dean, did you submit a letter to the Hillsborough Planning Board on February 28th, '25?
I'm sorry, did you hear my testimony?
Yeah, I'm just, yes. In that letter, did you include a revision to your original traffic accounts of local warehouses in New Jersey and Eastern PA that now includes the number of truck docks?
Yes.
Did you compare the number of truck trips to loading docks?
Yes.
If we go to page five of the letter, exhibit A26. Page five, please, of the letter. I guess you're controlling my letter. Are you showing it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong exhibit up.
There it is. Okay, he's got it. The first graph, please. So this first graph, do you agree this is a comparison of number of morning truck trips and the number of loading docks?
That's what it's labeled as.
And you have an R squared value of .1749?
Yes.
Based on that value of R squared, .1749, you conclude there's no correlation between loading docks and morning truck trips for the data collected, correct?
Correct.
If you go to the second graph, similar question for evening truck trips, you have a R squared value of .0099 and you therefore concluded there's no correlation between loading docks and afternoon truck trips for the data collected?
That's correct.
So based on that, you said there's essentially zero correlation between loading docks and truck trips?
In terms of being able to forecast based on the number of loading docks, yes, that is my conclusion.
You used a very specific statistical method for refuting the hypothesis that loading docks are related to truck trips. And based on R squared, we're able to refute it, at least for the data that was collected. I'd like to bring up an excerpt of Mr. Hausman's report, exhibit O17. It's titled 201 Homestead Road Traffic Review Supplemental dated 8/27/2024. While he's bringing that up, Mr. Hausman presented that to the board in September of 2024. It has a set of two graphs using data from empirical traffic counts conducted by you, Mr. Dean, for that.
Sorry, what?
O17.
Tell me one.
I don't have the page. Keep going. It's there, I know it. Keep going, please, O17. That's it, right there.
Here?
That one, right there. So Mr. Hausman took the data from your study, Mr. Dean, of local warehouses in New Jersey and Eastern PA, and then graphed that data, the morning one above and the evening one below, and it was warehouse size versus the number of truck trips. For that first graph for warehouse sizes compared to the AM truck trips, do you agree that Mr. Hausman shows an R squared value of .045?
No, I can't read the document and I don't recall it at all.
That was reviewed during Mr. Hausman's testimony. There was no dispute as to Mr. Hausman's mathematics. That was accepted.
Do you have a paper copy of the report to show?
the number of the size of the warehouse and graphed them for the AM peak hour in the upper graph. And he did a similar comparison for the PM truck trips in the lower graph. In the upper graph, he calculated an R squared of .045, indicating, as we discussed earlier, that there would be no correlation between warehouse size and morning truck trips for this data set. Do you agree, Mr. Dean?
I'm only seeing this for the first time, so no, I don't agree at this moment.
Did you review Mr. Hausman's report as part of rebuttal?
Yes.
This was part of his report.
Is there a question?
There was no objection to his mathematics, so I'm saying that Mr. Hausman used your data and computed an R squared value of .045 for warehouse size versus morning truck trips.
Again, is there a question?
Apparently you don't agree with that, but I'm stating for the record, this is what Mr. Hausman testified to. And for the PM hour, he calculated an R squared value of .110. If .045 were an R squared value for a comparison, would you agree that that would indicate there's no statistical significance?
Well, I would need to compare this with the ITE data, which apparently Mr. Hausman took exception to. So I, for him to cherry pick the data that we compiled merely to, I'll say, provide supplemental information to the board, I'd have to put all of that data together to draw some conclusion.
Okay, well, using Mr. Hausman's hypothesis, that truck docks were related to truck traffic, you know, we cherry picked those numbers and compared them for your small data set of eight to 10 warehouses and came up with no correlation. I'm just going back using the exact same methodology, using a different column from your chart that you collected, and we're indicating there is a very low R squared values for warehouse area versus truck trips. And you're recommending in your letter that we use your empirical data to understand what the impact of truck trips would be from these, from this development.
Sure. And I still believe that that's accurate because I look at the actual truck trips. I don't care about R squared in statistics. I look at what the data says, and if I look at a building, for example, which I've said, 10 and 30 Knox Drive in Piscataway, which is almost identical in size to the subject application, that actually generated 17 AM truck trips in the morning peak hour and two. So I'm sorry, excuse me, five, five at night. So I think that's the relative number that this board needs to consider. Eight trucks in and nine trucks out over the course of an hour, is that likely to have a material impact? I don't care about the statistics as much as I care about the actual numbers in terms of relevance.
If you're going to dispute Mr. Hausman's hypothesis based on statistics, I believe your analysis should also hold up to the same methods, and it does not. I'm saying that your R squared values are below essentially zero in your own terms, and there's no correlation for the data set that you collected that shows an indication or a correlation between warehouse size and truck trips.
Sure. I looked at the data, trying to back it into some statistical model that quite frankly, you know, a limited number of professionals understand, I think doesn't have a lot of relevance on, is 17 truck trips in a half a million square foot building material?
Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Dean, in your traffic impact analysis conducted by you and dated 12/22/21, you predicted the number of peak morning and evening truck trips by the project, did you not?
I don't recall and I didn't testify to that this evening.
Do you recall in your original traffic impact analysis, you testified to it earlier today, that you used the ITE trip generation manual, land use 150?
Yes.
Does this data from this manual compare the warehouse size to truck trips?
Yes.
Do you recall what the R squared value is for warehouse use 150 for morning and evening truck trips?
I do not, no.
Can we bring up Mr. Hausman's report? I'm sorry, be Mr. Dean's report, same exhibit, page 30 and 32?
I'm sorry, what do you want me to bring up?
I'm sorry, the original Mr. Dean's traffic report dated 12/22/21. Page 30.
12/22/21?
Yes, yes. Just look like your report that you submitted in December of 2021, Mr. Dean?
Yes.
We were talking about warehouse use 150. You've got that on page 30. This is for morning truck trips. And on page 32, this is the correlation warehouse use 150 for evening truck trips. Going back to the morning, can you see what the R squared value is there?
No.
It's not reported. If I go down to cars, it is reported, .65, I'll keep going. And this is the evening, do you see the R squared for the evening?
There's no value, I think.
There's no value. I'm saying there's no statistical correlation between warehouse size and truck trips using this data set from warehouse use 150. Would you agree that based on no R squared value that the statistical significance is low?
Could you articulate that again, please?
Would you agree that based on no R squared value being reported, that there is a low statistical significance between warehouse size and truck trips for this data set?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Other objectors?
Mr. Dean, the analysis that you did of the traffic impacts on Homestead Road and the intersection of Homestead and 206, were they based on these ITE truck trip generation estimates?
Yes.
So does, does that, does the fact that they are, don't meet the statistical significance that you laid out in your most recent report call into question your analysis of traffic?
Not at all. They comport with the actual data of truck traffic associated with warehouses in New Jersey. So the statistics become irrelevant when we have actual data and actual truck counts.
So the analysis that you did, the statistical analysis of R squared in your most recent letter is not pertinent?
I'm saying the actual data, and again, I will refer to 30 and I think it's 10 and 30 Knox Drive with a total, the highest truck trip generation of all the sites we studied had 10 entering trucks and seven exiting trucks.
So a single warehouse you're talking about?
A single warehouse with the highest truck trip generation, all of the others were lower.
Yeah, so no statistics then?
Statistics are irrelevant. I'm talking about the actual volume that gets input into the modeling.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Objector number one, number five, number four. Okay. Mr. Mayhew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whoever has control of the screen, maybe could you help by moving to Mr. Dean's most recent report? I think it's, I'm looking for the evening peak hour chart. So you're really close. And I think, Mr. Dean, you've testified that this is a plot. On the left is total truck trips and along the bottom is number of loading docks. And these blue dots are taken from your firm's infield. How can I reference this exhibit that you have where there's?
Yes, it's the.
There's 10 warehouses your firm went.
810. Right, 810?
810, which was replicated in A26 as well.
Okay, somebody's moved it to that. So you took the data from your field information and then, please go back to that, to the plot. I'm just trying to help people understand, and so that's where these blue dots came from, from this spreadsheet.
Based on the number of loading docks at the research sites, the blue dot represents, for example, the one furthest to the left is a building that has 10 loading docks that generated five truck trips. And then moving from left to right, the next research site had eight truck trips for, I'll interpolate, maybe 25 or 27 docks. The next one had 10 truck trips for 30 loading docks and so on and so forth as we go from left to right. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to help people understand. I don't have anything electronic, but I have 12 paper copies that I can hand out. It's gonna look very similar to this chart.
Of what?
It's truck trip count.
I'm curious, we've asked for a review letter and you've not provided it, but you were able to put this together and show it to us for the first time tonight?
Yes.
That seems real fair.
This chart is Mr. Dean's data.
And I just want to place my objection on the record, that the board engineer who told us we would have a review letter before this evening so we'd have an opportunity to have it in review, didn't purvey a review letter but apparently prepared exhibits to cross-examine our witness and didn't even provide that to us before tonight's meeting. That's outrageous.
So, Mr. Dean, this exhibit is. So, Mr. Dean, this exhibit is purely taking numbers from your exhibit of the field study of your warehouses. And on the left is truck trips, and along the bottom is area of warehouse, in thousands of square feet. And what I want people to notice is, when you put a curve through this data and calculate the R squared, comes out to be .04. Again, as we've been, and this is an engineering number that we've been throwing out tonight, in your opinion, wouldn't this show the lack of correlation between truck trips and the area of the warehouse?
I'll go back to my testimony, which is, I look at this data, and I look at a 530,000 square foot building for which there is one data point, excuse me, and it generates five truck trips. That's what that one data point that is closest to this application and size shows. I'll concede it's one data point. I'll also concede that the highest of all of these sites generated 10 truck trips. That's the relevant number, that's what we used in our study, we exceeded that number in our study. So, we can talk about math all night, I'm actually looking at what we used in our reports and our data in terms of assessing the impacts of this proposal. The rest of this is addressing issues raised by objectors and now Mr. Mayhew, but the number 10 is, on this chart, to me, is the most important. Five trucks in and five trucks out is 10 trips per hour, one every six minutes. That has no impact on traffic.
But, would you agree on this chart, which is from your data, there are some warehouses, let's take the 200,000 square foot data point, producing in your data eight truck trips, which is more than the warehouse that had the 500, let's interpolate, 535,000 square, which if I'm reading this correct, is five truck trips, it's less. So, this is purely, I'm asking a mathematical question of your data, would you agree in those two data points, the warehouse that was twice as large, at 500 and some square feet, is reporting a lower truck trip count?
Correct.
Could it be something else is driving these numbers besides simply the area of the warehouse? I think you had mentioned maybe there was potentially, the number of employees at the facility could also be a driver.
In terms of total traffic, yes, in terms of truck traffic, no.
Could we go back to the, well, I got one other exhibit. Mr. Dean, have you done traffic studies in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
This isn't meant to be a trick question, but I'm gonna hand out a PennDOT policy and procedure guideline for trying to identify the land use category of a warehouse.
I'm sorry, what is this document, what is going on here? No, I'm instructing you not to answer the question. If Mr. Mayhew wants to testify, even though he's not a traffic expert, he can feel free. But to try and cross-examine my witness without providing any of these documents or what he's referring to is ridiculous. I understand the board's just gonna let it happen because, well, I think we all know why because, but it's not appropriate.
Mr. Mayhew is cross-examining, asking questions.
And hasn't, he hasn't provided us a review letter in like, two years.
The objectors asked you questions. Mr. Mayhew is asking questions.
And he's asking him to look at documents for the first time tonight.
Mr. Mayhew, ask him the question without the documents, please. Mr. Dean wants to answer without reviewing the documents, that's up to Mr. Dean or Mr. Giannetti to tell him whether to answer them or not.
The discussion goes to what parameters are impacting trips at a facility. And we've heard the applicant state that they're ruling out three types of land use categories. Our office is concerned that we don't know how you physically do that. And so, we're trying to understand what might be the real traffic on this facility. And when PennDOT looks at applications for warehouses, they look at different parameters of the facility, the actual facility, they look at the square footage.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're testifying, you're not asking a question. You're asking about Pennsylvania DOT and how they handle things.
Ask the question, Mr. Mayhew, please.
Well, let's turn to an exhibit that our office received four hours ago from you, Mr. Giannetti. It's the Dolan and Dean chart. Which identifies different land use categories, including 150 warehouse, 154 transload. I think this exhibit was on the screen a little earlier, I'll give you a chance to put it back up.
Yeah, that looked like it.
Yeah, no, it just keeps clicking away.
Maybe you could zoom in to help people read it. Mr. Dean, maybe you can help with the, there's a lot going on. Down the left-hand side, would you agree, is a listing of the different ITE land use categories, 150 to 157?
For what is categorized, excuse me, as a warehouse use, yes.
And then, going across the top, you've broken this into six columns, the first three have to do with total trips, that would include trucks and vehicles, correct?
Any movement of a motor vehicle in and out of the property.
And then, the right three columns are specifically just trucks.
Correct.
And, Mr. Dean, you've, the chart will give you AM, meaning the peak trips in that one hour identified as the peak hour in the AM, correct?
Correct.
And similarly, whatever is the identified peak hour in the PM. And then, the third column in each group is a total for the 24-hour period, correct?
Yes.
So, just to help the public and the board understand, under warehousing 150, it's anticipated, there's 315 entering trips, 314 exit, for a total of 629 trips in a 24-hour period anticipated, versus, am I reading this correct, if it was something more similar to a fulfillment center, it'd be closer to 3,400 trips in that 24-hour period?
Correct. A sorting fulfillment center.
And if it was, the facility was operated similarly to a partial hub code 156, then the trips could be closer to 2,500 per day.
Correct.
And I just want to point out, I guess, the most significant, from a truck standpoint, is that partial hub, AM peak could be 48 potentially, versus, the rest of the codes are fairly similar at around 11. Is that, am I reading that correct? So, would it be safe to say, then, that when you're analyzing the truck trips on a facility, understanding the use of that facility would impact the numbers you're gonna estimate would be generated?
I'm not following your question.
So, when you're calculating the vehicle and truck trips anticipated for a facility, you are going to take into consideration what type of facility that is?
Yes, that's correct.
And, different warehouse facilities, as you're shown here, would produce different types of daily and peak rates, correct?
For trucks or all vehicles?
For both.
No, as I look at every warehouse category, for example, in the morning peak hour, with the exception of parcel hub, they're virtually all equivalent. Same in the evening peak hour. They range from five to 16 total truck trips. The parcel hub category stands out as generating three to five times more traffic. By and large, the rest are all consistent.
And there is, though, a difference in the total truck traffic, warehousing 150 and partial hub are three times, let's say, the fulfillment center sort for the total anticipated truck traffic during the day.
On a 24-hour basis, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Board members.
Mr. Dean, so, obviously, engineers and math, everybody can make a number look advantageous. We talk about, you try and break it down to the most smallest denominator to prove a point, but realistically, the total traffic on a daily basis is really the number versus the AM peak hour, because that's the traffic that is being on that road or in that area of town on a whole day, every day during 65 days. So, you can say that, in your little chart there, or continue to, say that it's 10 truck tricks an hour on peak, but then you have, as our engineer stated, possibility of 322 total trips in a 24-hour period. So, wouldn't you consider that more impactful to an area, as opposed to trying to break it down to a one-hour segment in peak AM and PM time?
It's a very good question, Mr. Lepanti. The reason traffic engineers focus on the peak hour is because that's when the system, when the infrastructure is busiest and typically most constrained. So, we evaluate roadway conditions and operations when traffic is at its worst. I understand that there are 24 hours in a day, but if we look at that and isolate the AM peak and the PM peak, which represent the two busiest times of traffic in the day, and we conclude that the system can appropriately accommodate that traffic, what occurs at other hours of the day, when the system is not so constrained, are not of consideration in what traffic engineering evaluates? And what you're asking me is, is there an effect of having that traffic at off-peak hours? Of course, there's an effect, it's more traffic, but because I looked at it, when the system is most constrained, to me, that is why the practice of traffic engineering focuses on peak hours. It's not to give you a low number, I'll accept that 322 truck trips per day sounds like a lot. It's more than 10 truck trips an hour on a 24-hour basis, it's probably closer to 15. But, I'm not as concerned as a design professional in evaluating the suitability of your roadway infrastructure, what's occurring at 11 o'clock in the morning, when there's 30% traffic on the road that there is at peak hours. So, that's why we specifically isolate those hours. It is not to dilute a number, but it has to be put in a context of, what does that number, that total daily volume mean over the course of a business day or 24 hours? So, it's done for different purposes, and if you're asking me what kind of impact 322 trucks, by way of example, has over the course of a day, that's social engineering, not traffic engineering, so I don't have an opinion on it, we didn't study it.
All right, did you do a, and I don't recall, and I apologize, give us a number of what the existing traffic is on that road as total?
I did, I didn't testify to it tonight, but I went and I described how we measured the existing truck traffic, and that has been presented. Total traffic, truck traffic, yes, all of the above.
And I could ask you what the delta would be, but you didn't testify tonight, so I'll leave it alone, but would you say, based on your testimony, it was significantly increased?
No. Again, this is a permitted use, you and the governing body specifically said, we want a warehouse in this zone, this applicant is fulfilling that directive that you prescribed when you enacted zoning. So, an applicant has the right to rely on that decision to make a use permitted, with the assumption that the infrastructure was deemed at the time it was made a permitted use could accommodate it. You hold that police power and that planning discretion, we're just fulfilling the blueprint that you laid out. So, yes, there will be more traffic because of this development, but in our analysis that I believe has not been refuted, there is capacity to accommodate it safely and efficiently for the use that is proposed.
One last question. So, the warehouse that we, has been testified to the type of warehouse, but no tenant, so could the type of tenant, based on the ITE 150, generate more or less traffic than one another, as far as in the general warehousing, even though the square footage is the same, but the tenant is different?
The tenants differ, whether it's an office building, a retail space, that is the nature of commercial development. It's available for leasing, so tenants are never known.
So, with that being considered, we need to estimate the max?
And that is precisely why, in this exercise of all the different potential warehouse categories, we isolated land use code 150 because it yielded the highest traffic projections, not the lowest. To the extent a cold storage operator were to take the building, and I'm not suggesting that is the case, it would have lower traffic characteristics than the use we proposed. That is the nature of traffic engineering, we are inherently conservative, and it is for this practice, because we don't want to be caught, I'll say, lowballing these projections, and that's why we rely on industry standard information from ITE, and in this instance, that has been supplemented because of, I'll say, a general, not general, but a frequent distrust of ITE. Let's look at what happens for warehouses in New Jersey, and we've provided you with that data, and it is consistent, if not lower, than the ITE projection. So, to answer your question, expecting that out of 10 different research sites for multi-tenanted buildings, there may be tenants that generate more, and there may be tenants that generate less, but overwhelmingly, the data supports the conclusions I've made in our report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question. Any of our professionals or anybody on the board, is this a 24-hour operation, or are these hours restricted?
We haven't come to that.
Okay, so, if it's not a 24-hour operation, and say it's only from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, whatever it is, and those hours are compressed, would that make a difference? would that make a difference in traffic generation moving goods in and out when there's not 24 hours to do it? And the studies that you've done, were those 24-hour operations or unconclusive?
Well, in the studies we did, we focused on peak hours. None of the independent research we've done evaluated 24-hour data for the reasons I explained to Mr. Lepani. It has no, I'll say, I don't want to say relevance, but it has no relevance to the specific type of analysis we do to evaluate your infrastructure. That's done at the finest level. And I should point out even more, in traffic engineering studies, when we do our counts, we do them in 15-minute intervals. Within those counts, we find the highest 15 minutes when traffic was the busiest. And when we calculate capacity, we assume that that demand over the highest 15 minutes over the course of two hours in the morning and two and a half at night, we pretend, we assume that that peak-peak demand is sustained over the course of an entire hour. So when I say that these calculations and studies are conservative, it is precisely under that set of parameters. So to your point, I'd have to look at the underlying data that ITE developed, and we've shared one number of 322. I don't know whether that was a 24-hour-a-day business or a 12-hour-a-day business. But in terms of the analysis and my conclusions, it's not relevant. It may be informational of the board, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
So you're more geared towards congestion rather than just constant traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's to assess whether your infrastructure can sustain the increased traffic loads. That's why we do it. That's why DOT does it. That's the art and practice of traffic engineering.
Nothing further.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Dean, you made a, when you were answering Mr. Lepani's, or committee member Lepani's, question, you talked about that the governing body wanted warehouses. Did you speak to anyone in the governing body that passed that ordinance?
I can only infer from what I read in the plain language of the ordinance.
Okay. So you don't know what they were thinking, so your comment was not accurate?
They specifically included warehouses as a permitted use. So someone thought of it. I didn't verify that they thought of it.
A 150 warehouse?
A warehouse is a permitted use in the zone.
A 150 warehouse, please.
A warehouse, period.
I just want to be clear, though. The zone, just so we're speaking the same thing, the zone permits warehousing, shipping, and receiving.
And I know we had other discussions, and there was a lot of debate on it. But you did not speak to anyone in the governing body?
I did not, no.
Okay. So with the different types of warehouses here, you said you chose the 150 for your analysis. Since we don't know what the businesses are going to be in there, there was none provided, why wouldn't you have taken the worst-case scenarios of fulfillment center of the sort type or a parcel hub?
Yes. Because out of respect to your concerns and in light of the much higher volume of traffic that those two land uses generate, and thirdly, because the specific building design would not allow those uses, I'll defer to Mr. Giannetti, but that they have been excluded voluntarily by the applicant, even though arguably the zone permits it, this applicant has taken the further step to say they will not seek tenants of that ilk for this building or these buildings.
Okay.
To negate that what-if scenario.
Right. And I guess in your study, because you made a mention that you used other New Jersey warehouses to do your evaluation.
Correct.
What? I think the right word here, I guess. How do they compare with what the proposed business here is? What were their businesses?
They are speculative warehouses that were not, I'll say, end-user-built.
I thought you got an email that said it was 100% occupied.
100% occupied, correct.
So what's the business?
Oh, I don't know. At the time, at the time of the studies, I couldn't tell you. I know who's in 10 and 30 NOX right now, but that could change tomorrow. But at the time of the data...
But it could be a future tenant that comes in here, since we don't know who's coming in here, could generate higher.
That's why we look, or lower. That's why we look at the data, and we try to figure out the highs and the lows. And as we look at a warehouse use, you will see, for the New Jersey warehouses, with one exception, and that's the one in Piscataway, every single one of those buildings was lower than ITE. So I think that should give you a level of comfort that the tenant that ultimately occupies is not going to negate my conclusions.
Are they going to move into this one?
I didn't hear the question.
Because I'm trying to get, he's trying to correlate other warehouses to this empty one right now. And I'm just trying to ascertain what those businesses are and how he would feel confident that's the type of businesses would be in here without going to worst-case scenarios here.
Well, I have to look at not only the ITE data, and I don't have the chart, but I mean, I believe there are dozens more studies than we've compiled, and that we have now looked at 10 different sites, multi-tenanted, some with multiple buildings, that represents a spectrum of, I'm venturing a guess, but I'd say 30, maybe 40 different tenants and tenant types. And the data is all the same. I understand the public, and you don't like it. I get it. But I mean, I'm...
I don't put words in my mouth. I didn't say I didn't like it.
Three and a half years of hearings. I can draw my own conclusions.
Don't say...
But I look at the data, Mr. Chairman, and it addresses your concern, that what-if scenario. Nothing in any of the data, whether IT or what we've collected, shows an outlier of such an enormous magnitude that it negates my conclusions. There's nothing to support that hypothesis. In fact, as I've indicated, arguably, we have overestimated the projected traffic.
All right. We're still open to the public? No one says we're not. So I'm going to open up to the public, and we're in our last 15 minutes. So please feel free to come up, state your name and address, stating whether or not you're represented by the objectors or any of the objectors, and just please keep your questions to Mr. Dean's rebuttal.
Because if they are, they can't ask.
That's true.
Good evening. Innisiv River, 24 Talihaw Trail. I'm not represented by the objectors. Mr. Dean, I just wanted to clarify. You said you studied 10 warehouses in New Jersey that were the same square footage?
No. Not the same. We studied 10 different warehouse locations. Let me just verify. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Actually, nine were in New Jersey. One was in either Northampton or Lehigh County in Pennsylvania.
Mr. Dean, but did you study all the warehouses in the vicinity? How can we know that you didn't cherry pick your nine, 10 warehouses just to have nice data to present?
I will refer you to the data that was submitted. They range in size from a small of 120 to the largest at 730,000 square feet. They are strewn throughout the state, northern New Jersey, but ranging from Mercer through Somerset, Hunterdon County.
So I don't know how many warehouses located in New Jersey, but you chose specific 10. So my question is, how did you choose these specific 10 and not other specific 10? If you had any statistical data for the whole warehouses, you could say, "Look, this is the minimum. This is the maximum."
Sure.
Right? And you have 10 warehouses that you chose. And I'm just asking, how can we be sure?
Some of these were chosen for us. And I will say, I had a very similar application in a different community, and that particular mayor of that community doesn't believe in ITE, doesn't believe in statistics. So she said, "I'm going to choose some warehouses I want you to study." So we did. And it's data that we had already compiled for an identical exercise. So over the period of time from, starting in 2019 and continuing through October of 2024, we have periodically updated our findings when we are asked to look at a warehouse. So that's what we did.
Okay. Thank you. And so you said that you conducted a study based on loading docks, right? Just, and found that there is no correlation between amount of loading docks and the traffic. Am I right?
That was my testimony.
Yes. And you said that you chose one warehouse in New Jersey and another in Pennsylvania?
We chose nine in New Jersey. We studied, we didn't choose. We studied nine different warehouses in New Jersey and one in Pennsylvania.
So this was for your rebuttal, right? And to show that there is no correlation between loading docks? So my question is again the same. Maybe if you chose other warehouses, you would find that there is correlation between loading docks?
Any objectors welcome to do that.
Okay. But I'm just asking, how can we be sure that you didn't cherry pick them for your rebuttal?
Go look at the sites. We've been transparent with where they're located. If anyone in this process felt that they were not comparable to this application, I'd welcome that criticism. No one has.
I also want to be clear. The original comparison did not have loading docks identified. I only went out and got that information based upon the objectors' testimony. So we didn't cherry pick based upon the number of loading docks. That was even what they looked at in the original study.
And another question. So you're saying that it is right to look at the square footage of a warehouse to find out how much traffic it will generate, right?
It is but one method. And in my opinion, it is the most reliable method to look at the traffic for a given building, yes.
Right. So you're talking about square footage, but you're not talking about volume. So if you have one-story-high warehouse, and this particular warehouse will be four-story-high, so it probably could be up to four times more goods. But you're still looking only on the square footage?
Correct. That is the industry standard practice. And for warehouses, each one of these has different descriptions as to ceiling heights. That is included in the definition of each of these under ITE. So I can't speak to volume. You're the first person in 41 years of practice that ever raised that. It's a novel approach.
Okay. But doesn't it make sense that a warehouse that has one story and another that has 10-story-high will have more goods and probably more traffic?
I don't know of a 10-story warehouse.
Five-story.
I don't know of a five-story warehouse. That's self-storage. It's very different.
This particular one will be four-story-high.
It's not four stories. It's a single story, as I understand.
But you could put many, many, I don't know, shelves. So you have a lower warehouse and a taller warehouse. So in a taller, you could put more shelves and more goods.
Sure. I will defer to the architect in his testimony as to the height of the building and the interior clear volume.
And the last question, I don't know if that's relevant to you. You mentioned that the client said it won't be specific type of warehouses, right?
Correct.
Is it a promise, or it's... How can we be sure it will happen? After it's built, how can we sure that the client, you know, indeed keeps his promise?
You're about to hear the legal answer for that.
So when we say we'll agree to that as a condition of approval, that's assuming, and it's a big assumption that this gets approved, it would be a condition of that approval that it cannot be a parcel delivery hub, a transload facility, or a sort fulfillment center. It will be a condition of approval. Zoning officer would have that. Whenever a tenant goes in, they would have to apply for a zoning permit as well as a certificate of occupancy. And if UPS tried to come in and seek a zoning permit, Mr. Coys would say, "No way. There's a condition of approval for this property that says parcel hubs are not allowed."
Okay. Thank you.
Correct, Mr. Coys. I'm sure you would do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, out of sheer curiosity, which town?
Which mayor asked him?
East Brunswick. Anyone who's been involved in land use.
I would have thought it would have been another east.
I'm sorry, not East Brunswick. My apologies. East Windsor.
That one was the one I expected.
Notoriously difficult community.
Thank you.
Ankit Shah. Live on 3D Run.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Ankit. A-N-K-I-T. 3D Run. I'm not associated with the objectors. Oh, go in. So a question, you talked about, or this is the applicant, you talked about that when the actuals were collected, the warehouses were occupied or leased. I was just trying to assess whether it was evaluated whether they were being utilized at 100% of the capacity or, you know, at what percentage capacity those warehouses were actually being utilized.
As a matter of practice, we don't study empty buildings or underperforming sites. And the reason is, obviously, this is an important concern for the community. And I've been doing this for longer than I care to admit I just did. But we want to be consistent. And I want to present to this board and the public facts and information that I believe is helpful in understanding. So I can't tell you, and when we're directed by a certain mayor in a certain town to look at a particular building, it's because there is an opinion or a thought that it is a busy building. And so is it fully occupied? Is it fully leased? Yes. I don't have the means, I don't know that anybody does, to assess whether they're using every square foot under their lease. But what business does?
And that's why, because, I mean, at least in my head, I was thinking, you know, I may have rented a home, but I may not be there. And so if I might, anyway, so I hear your answer. I appreciate it. And then the second part was, you talked a little bit about the methodology, the 15-minute increments, and then using that to extrapolate. Can you share some details about over how, you know, what kind of duration that data was collected? You know, like weekdays, weekends, or holidays, over a period of days, months, weeks?
Sure. We typically sample, count on a representative weekday, AM peak hour, PM peak hour. As a general practice, we don't do counts on Monday morning, and we don't do counts on Friday afternoon. Why? People are away. They vacation. They're not, they're coming into work late, for whatever reason. Generally speaking, we don't even do it on Monday evenings or Fridays for the same reason. So we traditionally stick to, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to collect our counts. We do it when schools are in session, when it's not a religious or federal holiday, representative of typical traffic conditions. In this instance, we have studied 206 and Homestead. I've lost count how many times. We've put machines out on the road. We've put cameras out on the road. So we have compiled data over multiple days, over multiple weeks, over several years throughout the duration of this, as well as other applications in the area. So this is not a one-time-only snapshot.
Got it. So yeah, so all of the numbers we're seeing are kind of averages across that, not excluding certain, like, certain data that's collected, but maybe excluded for certain reasons?
We don't collect data if it's not a representative day. It's a normal traffic day. You know, there isn't an accident on 206 that might affect it, or any other local road. And that's why, and again, I'll say, the benefit of an application that takes this much time is that we're constantly refreshing to ensure that our original findings are still consistent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dean, are the numbers in A27 ITE numbers from the ITE manual?
I don't know what A27 is.
The last, the last... The last grid.
I believe so, yes. 11th edition, it's entitled 11th Edition ITE Trip Generation Calculations. Yes, Mr. Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Rich Garman, 53 Winding Way. I'm not affiliated. So, Mr. Dean, is the ITE a governing body?
It is an international professional society that, among other charges or tasks, provides guidelines and direction on the conduct of traffic studies, the design of traffic signals, and a host of other transportation and traffic-related... and a host of other transportation and traffic-related practices.
Okay, so they don't enforce their categories? They don't mandate that a sort facility has to be this design or you can't build it? You can't call it that, right?
The IT provides a description of what a sort facility is.
But there's no law, regulation, ordinance that says this building has to meet this in order to fall under this category?
Well, there are rules and regulations and practices, whether it's by zoning, whether it's by building code, whether it's by other state, local, or federal guidelines that, Fire Protection Code, that dictate how a building is used and constructed.
Okay, but it doesn't define a sort building has to be constructed in this arrangement, in this setup, with this travel area around it, with these parking spaces, with these loading docks. They don't lock you into that?
Who's they?
Anybody. Any governing body determines specifically what a sort facility must be designed as.
There may be some somewhere. I, I'm not a building, I'm not a building designer, so I.
Exactly. Okay, that was going to be a question. You're a traffic expert, not an architect or building management, right?
We've covered that.
Okay, great. So you did testify that these three things were not really designed for that, but yet you're not testifying as an expert.
I'm testifying as a traffic expert.
Yeah, but you're saying that.
Wait, hold on, let him finish the, let him finish his answer.
Go ahead.
Because that wasn't his testimony.
Who has observed those specific buildings and categories in terms of how much parking is needed, how much truck parking is needed, and the operation contained within the building. So I have expertise in the traffic and operational characteristics of each of those land use categories.
Okay, but you're not an expert on whether a building, even though it wasn't optimized for one of those categories, could in fact, if a tenant wants to use it as such, could use it as such?
Not, not true at all.
Why's that?
For example, some buildings are what's called dual-loaded. They have loading docks on both sides of the building because they serve an entirely different function than the building that is proposed on this site. So a building that, for example, just has parking in front for employees can never be used for, for example, a transload facility, which is a long skinny building with a very short space in between docks, a cross-dock facility as it's known.
Were you here on September 14, 2023 for the testimony of the architect?
I have no recollection.
Okay.
I may have been, I may not, I just don't.
I'll just let you know, and I have it documented, that the architect did indeed say those buildings could be used for those things if the tenant so decided. And he is an architect. If the tenants are willing to use it in that configuration, it can be done.
Again, this is argumentative, he's misrepresenting the testimony during public comment. He can present it, and I can present what he testified to as well.
Fine, I will. All right, so I just have one more question. You stated building square footage has no correlation with loading docks as far as truck traffic, correct?
That's what the data shows, yes.
So hypothetical, 338,000 square feet is the first building, I believe?
I, I don't, that sounds about right, but.
Right, right? I'm close enough. So 338,000 square foot building, no loading docks, 338,000 square feet building with 50 loading docks, no correlation? Who's going to generate more traffic?
Sure, if a building has zero loading docks, it can accommodate trucks.
Okay, but you just said there's no correlation. Which is it?
Well, there's a big correlation between zero and 50.
Okay.
There's no correlation between 20 and 50.
You said there was no correlation between building square footage and loading docks. I just presented you with a case, there's a correlation.
If a building has no.
Which one way or the other?
No.
I agree with you. If there's no loading dock, you're not going to bring a truck in there.
Because it's not, it's no longer a warehouse, it's an entirely different land use. Can't have a warehouse, not a loading dock.
Sure you can.
Absolutely not. And that'll be my testimony.
I can store my cars in a warehouse.
I'm not going to argue, I'm not.
Me neither. I proved my point.
Nia Tisha, 3D Run. Just to follow up on the methodology question from earlier, for the 10 warehouses that you did study, can you explain how frequently you collected data, on what days that data was collected?
All of that is documented and contained in our analysis as to the date that the data was collected.
So it was on a single date?
Well, for each warehouse studied, it appears to be a single date. They were all done on different dates, with the exception of, it looks like March 15th of 2022 was a busy day for us. We studied three locations on that particular day, and then another location the following day, and then another location five days after that.
But each one was only studied on a single day?
Correct.
At the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour?
Correct.
Okay, so when we're looking at graphs and we're looking at actuals and data, you're asking us to trust the data, but you've only looked at it each warehouse on a single day versus weeks and weeks of time to say, okay, over three months, over a quarter, et cetera, this is what we're seeing the actuals be? And you're asking us to disregard ITE statistical models?
Not, not at all. I'm, I'm buttressing ITE with specific New Jersey data.
But you said many times, I don't care for statistics.
When it comes to the truck traffic, I look at the highest research site we counted in one hour had 17 truck trips, 10 in, 7 out.
But that was one day.
And there's, I have no basis to assume one day is any different than the next.
I don't know about that.
You're welcome to can, collect your own data and take a look at it. I've done tens of thousands of studies. I will stand by my testimony. As a qualified professional in the field, and I've comported with IT data, the more data you have, the more accurate it is. That's why we supplemented IT.
At one point, you said you don't trust IT, and now you're saying you do trust IT.
No, no, timeout, that's misrepresenting his testimony.
That is not what I said at all. Other people don't trust IT. We proved them wrong.
I don't think so. One day for each site is not proving anybody wrong.
Collect your own data and let's have a discussion. Otherwise.
Sure, send me a check, I will.
That's, that's my issue as well.
And just to be clear on that, Gary Dean's study originally was entirely on IT, and he said that is the exact methodology to be using. It was the board members and the objectors who said it's not reliable, and he used this data to support that IT is not only a good, the appropriate measure, but it's conservative.
Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road. First, Mr. Giannetti, you misrepresented what the T E C D zone has as a permitted use.
Mr. Martin, you've got to talk up.
Anybody can raise this. Mr. Giannetti, please. All right. You misrepresented what the T E C D zone says.
Is that a question?
Mr. Giannetti just made this statement. He said the T E C D zone.
So if you, during public comment, if you want to argue that warehousing, shipping, and receiving is not permitted in the T E C data zone, be, be my guest.
Folks.
Says warehousing, shipping, and receiving located.
Mr. Martin, for purposes of the record as a whole, engaging in argument with the witnesses doesn't do any of you any good because ultimately neither you nor the witness are ultimately going to decide to approve or disapprove this project. It's these five people. So let us be reminded of the fact that you're basically talking to the board and not the witnesses or Mr. Giannetti, who we all know where he feels on the project, and Mr. Dean feels on the project. Let's try to focus in on where you find the faults with the testimony and with the project, and not so much with the Pete, with the personalities. And stop reading into things, Mr. Tarantino, as I can see on your face.
Are you saying I can't say that Mr. Giannetti just said it allows warehousing, shipping, and receiving?
Mr. Giannetti's state, with all due respect to Mr. Giannetti, he's a member of the bar, Mr. Giannetti's statements aren't worth the paper they're not printed on. He can say anything he wants, but it doesn't bind anybody but Mr. Giannetti, including his.
I hear the same thing at home.
Including his cli, including his client, by the way.
All right.
Let's ask a question of Mr. Dean.
Okay, Mr. Dean, I think you also brought up the permitted use, right, as a warehouse?
We, we wouldn't be before this board for three and a half years if it weren't a permitted use.
All right, but it's a permitted use, but it's a warehousing, shipping, and receiving located completely within an enclosed building.
Are you asking me a zoning question or a traffic engineering question?
Well, I'll get into that in my public comment, then, the, the enclosed building part of it, but that's what was misrepresented. All right. You said this can't be a sort facility because of parking, right?
Correct.
Was that employee parking?
Yes.
All right, are you considering one employee parking space for one employee? One-to-one, is it?
That's generally, the, the ordinance doesn't prescribe that, but.
That's what you assume.
Correct. We look at Robbinsville, if we look at the site I referenced on Randolph Road in Franklin, it has hundreds, if not a thousand more spaces than this facility.
Okay, but you can have, on average, up to five people per car, right? Not just one? All right, two, three people per car. All right, sort facilities and fulfillment centers can and do use shuttle buses, don't they?
At peak times, they have been known to, yes. But they still have to have a location.
So that changes the number of employees.
It also reduces the traffic, but we digress. More shuttle vans means less traffic on the road.
I don't know what you're pointing at.
As opposed to single occupant vehicles, so.
I'm just saying that it also.
Mr. Martin.
It increases the amount of employees.
Can we just let Mr. Dean answer for the purpose of the record? Because depending on what happens out of this, nobody's going to want to read this transcript. So ask the question, let him answer, ask the next question.
All right, my question was that you're aware that sort fulfillment centers can use shuttle buses?
Correct.
Okay, and that adds the number of employees? And you're saying that you don't have enough parking for the, the employees?
I, I've posited that this site design does not have enough parking to be operated, among other criteria, as a sort fulfillment center.
All right. I guess that's it, thank you.
Hi, Joe O'Connell, White Meadow Road.
You might want to move this, right?
There we go, okay. Joe O'Connell, White Meadow Road. Just a couple of real quick questions. When you had stated that it was, that they must have known what they were doing because they put warehouses in to the zoning and whatever, however, is it possible that what maybe, that the, the definition of, or the thought of what a warehouse is maybe has changed drastically over the last several long years since?
I, I can't dispute that.
Okay.
However, zoning can always be amended.
Right, I understand that.
That has not occurred here.
And, well, I, that's just, right, in time for, anyway. And, and my other question is, is when you're looking at your traffic things, and you tended to focus on the peak times, is it also possible that maybe the peak times are not maybe what might make a difference to the neighborhood? For example, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, traffic coming through, and 3 o'clock in the morning, traffic coming through, making backup noises and stuff like this, could have a totally different impact depending upon what we're thinking about as traffic impact?
It, it would have a different impact in terms of noise, light, on the community. That is not my field of expertise.
But, but it would for traffic, it, it could work both ways, is my point.
If, if there's less ambient traffic on the road, it has, it has the ability to accommodate more site traffic.
Okay.
So there's a, in other words, there's a benefit to an operation in terms of infrastructure, not quality of life, not any social standard, but in terms of the ability of a roadway to accommodate traffic, there's a benefit to an operation that exhibits impacts at off-peak times.
Right, from, from your perspective. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Merrill Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road, not associated with SWAT. I just wanted to ask, and this may be in your original documentation, but, so I apologize, but how many of the sites, these 10 or 12 sites that you measured, had trailer parking where the trailers were used for transshipping?
I, I don't know how they were used. I see a tractor trailer and it's parked on a site. It's assumed presumably for commerce, that the movement of things that go in a truck. So if I see them on the site, the site's being used for that activity, I, I don't know its origin, its destination, or what's in the box.
Do you know how many of them had more than, like, a couple trailer parking spaces?
Sure, that's all been documented in our, in our findings. They, they range from 10 loading docks to just under 100.
Loading, loading docks?
Correct.
I'm asking about trailer parking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know for these sites. I haven't tabulated that.
And that wasn't documented, the trailer parking?
No.
Okay.
Craig Berlin, I'm not represented by SWAT. I've been listening to the testimony tonight, and the, the first thought that came to my mind was, where in the report is the reflection that the warehouse is entrance and exit feeds into a one-lane road as opposed to a road with many lanes across?
Sure, that, that is reflected on the site plans that Mr. Ford's office prepared.
But how does it affect the traffic?
Sure.
How does it affect congestion, a better word for you?
I'll do my best to answer your question. Our report reflects that it is a, a, a two-lane road, one lane in each direction. I believe, and it's been a while, I believe the proposal includes frontage improvements for a widened section of Homestead Road directly in front of the property where traffic would be turning in and out.
But it would remain one lane in each direction?
100% correct, yes.
Okay, then it's 100% correct also that there's no left and right relief. So I'm asking, does that affect your report in that there is, there is no way for trucks to come out and make a left? So would 10 trucks coming out to the right be the equivalent of 20 trucks coming out to right and left as far as congestion goes?
I, I, I believe midstream through this application, an ordinance was enacted to prohibit trucks on Willow Road.
Correct.
So that, as a result of that restriction, the truck traffic from the site can only turn to and from the west.
Correct.
So I, I'm not understanding your question then of trucks turning left from the site because they're prohibited.
Well, my question is, so if you normally have 10, I, I'm talking about congestion only now, the effect on the roads. So if you normally have 10 trucks coming out, let's go back to averages. Let's say five go east and five go west. The cars that are coming west, east to west, have to wait behind these trucks. These, these trucks have to stop, they're going to come to a full stop, and they're going to proceed in a safe, what would you say? They, they have to get up to speed, and trucks take a little while to get to speed. It's not an inordinate amount of time, but it's a time to get to speed. If I'm driving west to east on Homestead Road as an innocent, do I have to wait for that truck? Is any consideration in the report given to the fact that traffic has to wait for that truck? I don't believe there's going to be a traffic light there. I haven't heard there's going to be a traffic light there.
That's correct.
Okay, so is any consideration, where in the report is any consideration given to existing traffic that's going west to east because these trucks have to get up to speed?
Sure. I don't agree with your premise that a truck necessarily stops. If there is no opposing.
I hope they stop for all of us.
Can I finish, can I answer? If there is no westbound traffic, which a truck can see because they sit at a higher elevation, there's no reason for that truck to stop on Homestead before turning left into the driveway. But more importantly, whether it's a truck or a car, and whether they're turning into this site or any other driveway on Homestead Road, if a vehicle stops to wait for opposing traffic, if you're following that vehicle? traffic, if you're following that vehicle, you have to stop. You have to wait.
I think you're proving my point. It's going to have an effect on the traffic.
Correct, and we have studied that, and the levels of service, which are the operating standards, and I'm deviating from my testimony tonight, but we had very favorable levels of service, meaning the likelihood of you routinely being stopped and the creation of congestion is remote.
Well, that road is used to get to school by a lot of people in the mornings.
I'm going to object at this point. We've spent a lot of time on the traffic routes and the levels of service. He has a whole report on it, and he's testified at length at a prior hearing, and there was an opportunity to cross-examine him on that.
I'd like to, I'd like to continue. If you exit into a road that has, say, two lanes going in each direction, and I'm coming from west to east, I can avoid this truck entirely by staying in the southern portion, let's say, and go right by it, it has no effect on my traffic.
Can you make that a question, please? We're not having commentary.
And even the subject matter is not what he testified to tonight. It was in his report at a prior meeting when he testified previously.
I guess my question was, was any weight given to the fact that it's a one-lane in each direction road which is not accessible from one side, that the trucks don't have access to? And also, I wanted to know if there was a traffic light, and I wanted to know if the trucks are going to have to stop. I have all of my answers to those questions.
Okay, thank you. And this is going to be our final question, because we're running to overtime at this point.
Good evening, Chris Mulick, 30 Anka Drive. I'm not affiliated with any of the objectors with this application. Mr. Dean, Gary, how you doing?
Good to see you, Chris. Sort of, but go ahead.
When you say that you analyze the infrastructure of the system in Hillsborough specifically, what infrastructure did you analyze?
We looked at Homestead Road, we looked at the intersection of Route 206 where there is a traffic signal, and we looked at the easterly intersection at Willow.
So you didn't look at Raider Boulevard?
No, once we get further removed from the site and, you know, as a permitted use again, that becomes a very far-off-tracked intersection. I didn't testify to that this evening, so I, I'm going to limit my answers to what I address tonight.
Okay, yeah, because you did, you did indicate that you analyzed infrastructure during the peak hours, during, for a worst-case scenario.
Correct.
And so, you know, my thought is, when you talk about Amwell Road, when you talk about Arton Road, Millstone River Road, so you, you didn't analyze those at all?
I didn't, not specifically for this engagement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So we've reached the end of the evening.
Do you know how many more people have questions, just so I can plan for the next meeting? Members of the public?
You're going to pay for his overtime?
No, I just want to see how many people there are.
Is there anyone else that's going to be interested in asking Mr. Dean? Nope. We've got three, four.
It doesn't matter, the open to the public is open. More people could come at the next meeting. If it's open, it's open.
Well, we got to have Mr. Dean be available. Okay, I'm not going to debate back there, so we, we know what the process is.
You want to leave it open for until 11:00 and let Mr. Dean get asked as many questions he wants? It's up to you, 10:30 or 11:00. Your call. Doesn't mean that Mr., that's up to Mr. Giannetti as to whether he plans on bringing Mr. Dean back.
What's that? I know, but Mr. Dean's got to come back. Does anything, we should continue to the next meeting? Okay. Mr. Dean, are you available for the, what do we have, April 3rd is our next one? You're good? All right, so we're going to, since there's so many, we're going to bring Mr. Dean back on April 3rd. Mr. Bernstein, I know there's some...
Oh, I want to take care of this piece first, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
At this point, we need a motion to continue. File number 21 PB 25-MS/MSP, Peren v. Peren, Homestead Road LLC, Block 200.10, Lots 32 and 33, hearing to Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, and I would suggest to the board they consider a long evening.
Well, hopefully not.
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Srirajie?
Yes.
Chair, I would just ask that the objectors, if they're going to have, well, any response where I made my position known, since our rebuttal is addressing their objections, they shouldn't have an opportunity to re-present their witnesses, but if they're going to do that, or attempt to do that, they have them ready for the next meeting, they submit whatever they're going to testify to, and then we can argue whether or not they have a right to testify.
You want to be heard, counsel?
I don't have a, I will argue that when time comes.
No, no, we're going to argue that right now.
No, let me, let me, let me take part one of that. If you are going to introduce sir rebuttal testimony and plan on having a report regarding it, that report needs to be in at least 10 days prior to April the 3rd, not one second thereafter. However, let me make the following further point. It's sir rebuttal, for those of you who do not understand that word, of which there are very few of us who actually do, it's not new evidence, it's not new testimony, it's responses to the testimony that was presented by Mr. Ford and Mr. Dean at the last hearing and tonight, period.
The only thing I would disagree with is, it would be, if we're responding to their testimony, they won't get a chance, they shouldn't have an opportunity to respond back because it would just be a continuous back and forth of who's going to get the last word.
That may end up being the issue we'll deal with on the 3rd, but when you tell people that you want a report in, I want them to know the report you, we want to have in.
Correct.
You can then argue whether or not it should in fact come in, and the testimony should be taken, but I want the objectors to understand, who are not members of the bar, that this is not an opportunity to reopen, to bring back your witness and testify as it's related specifically to what was testified tonight by Mr. Dean, and tonight, and at the last hearing by Mr. Ford, period. Don't come up with new witnesses, don't come up with new anything other than a response to what you've heard. At that point, you all can make your arguments as to whether or not the board should entertain this ongoing who gets the last word from a testimonial point of view. The next thing after the testimonial point of view will be the public portion related to the application as a whole. So if you all feel the desperate need to come up and tell all the things you don't like about this, as you have tried throughout this entire, and I get to say it under Mr. Giannetti, the 20th hearing tonight, this is the moment. At some point, this board is going to bring this to an end and deliberate accordingly. So don't come and say, oh, well, I thought I, I can't be here tonight, can I come later? The night is the 3rd. We'll see whether it goes on beyond that.
Mr. Bernstein?
No.
Aren't we done with Mr. Ford? Did you close out the public?
We're done with Mr. Ford. I'm talking about the objectors' responses to Mr. Ford. That's what we're talking about.
Okay. Should we also go down the path about April 10th?
No.
Why not? We have no...
Try not to anticipate, Mr. Chairman.
You think we'll have enough time?
I will also point out that reports from the board planner and the board engineer need to be in prior to at least 10 days before the next hearing, if they're not in before, so I can anticipate Mr. Giannetti's next comment. And we have a hearing on the 3rd, and we have other hearings in April, and we'll see where we are.
And to keep in mind, as Mr. Bernstein called us, the Fab Five.
If I don't have five people who can participate, we can't have a hearing.
Well, and also, to eventually, if we come to a vote, after deliberating.
That is correct.
And the deliberation's not going to be five minutes, so that's why I was starting to anticipate another meeting past the 3rd.
I appreciate it.
Because we're going to need a substantial amount of time.
I anticipate multiple potential past the 3rd, but I'm not going to discuss what we're going to do and when at this point. The other, that is all for this item. I do have one other item for the board, and actually, the same Fab Five. As the board is aware, Judge Mihin has remanded Harvard Way back here for a re-review of the resolution, et cetera, that the board adopted back in 2022. I would like the board to agree to schedule minimally May 1st and May 22nd at 7:00 p.m. for hearings on those, so that we can advise counsel for the applicant counsel and counsel for the insurance carrier to be here. So I'm, I'm going to ask for that to be formally done.
I'll make a motion.
Before you do that, can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
No.
It's a procedural question for those of us who are not familiar with the proceedings, so that I understand correctly, when everybody rests and pens are down, it's...
Mr. Lanek, can we get this part, and then you can ask the question?
Oh, I thought before he was going to adjourn.
No.
No, no, we're not adjourning yet. We're having too much fun.
Looked like he was adjourned.
No.
I'm making a motion to get the two meetings that we need for the remand.
The minimally, the two meetings.
The meeting, the two meetings, yes.
Mr. Lombardozzi?
That was May 1st or, I'm so sorry, can you?
May 1st, May 22nd.
So we need, we need two votes for both of those.
No.
Harvard.
Harvard.
Harvard Way, JMJ 4 LLC.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
No, Mr. Pezen, Mr. Srirajie, Mr. Labonte, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Smith. That's the magic pie for that one, too.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Labonte?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Srirajie?
Yes.
Now, sir, now I've gotten past that part.
I promise, when pens are down, the order is public, objectors, applicant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So Mr. Giannetti, in a rare moment, like many of us, gets the last word. It doesn't happen too many other places, but here we are.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Wait, we're going to, yeah, can I have a motion to cancel the March 27th business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Do we got to roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
That's the last one you get.
Yeah. So with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, see everyone April 3rd.
10:35.